Scott coming there or not?
Guys, there's a splash pad at Lincoln.
I know, I heard that dude.
Oh!
Dude, I heard that.
What is going on? I was like, I wouldn't have to come to see you.
Oh, that's a cool class.
That's fine. So I'm a kid. Good thing I didn't vote no on that one.
Uh, no.
You guys are both like, we're gonna do this. And I'm like, alright, I see the order, do it. I'm using that splash pad this weekend.
Alright, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Welcome to Committee of the Hole. Before we get started today, I just want to, as a body, take a few moments to, first, I'd like to do a moment of silence for all of the victims and the tragedy in Orlando. So if you would join me in that. Thank you. And then I'd also like to read a statement. On behalf of the residents of Grand Rapids, I extend our community's deepest condolences to the city of Orlando and all those impacted by the unthinkable events of this past weekend. Our thoughts and prayers are with the victims, their loved ones, and your entire community. We are incredibly saddened by this senseless act of violence. We also express our sincere sympathy and we offer our prayers of support during this incredibly difficult time. We wish for the speedy recovery of those wounded and pray that you find peace and the support from the many communities who are reaching out and from knowing that you are not alone in your grief. We stand behind the belief that there is no place in our society for this kind of hatred or hatred of any kind. May our condolences bring you comfort and ease the pain of this terrible tragedy. I would also like to promote a community-wide event, a prayer service that is gonna be held on Wednesday at 7:00 PM at Park Church. The service will give people an opportunity to grieve this senseless loss and the violence in Orlando and stand in solidarity with the LGBTQ community in Grand Rapids and beyond. And then, the last thing I want to say is that I've had a number of individuals reach out to me asking about the Pride Festival coming up this weekend. And I just wanted to say publicly that our chief is actively involved with the organizers of this event to review all of our safety practices and policies and to ensure that we'll have some security measures in place for this weekend. So thank you all. Alright, and now we will move on and start with our agenda items. So we have a very full agenda today. And we'll start off with our first agenda item, which is a resolution scheduling a special meeting of the City Commission to order, or I'm sorry, to consider, to order. To consider approval of collective bargaining agreements.
Support?
Alright.
Mayor?
Yes?
I can help?
Okay. I was looking at who is gonna come up for this. I didn't know if it was gonna be Mary Beth or, do you wanna take it?
Yes, please. As you know, staff is busily negotiating labor contracts with our various bargaining units, attempting to get as many as we can completed before July 1st. Because under state law, there cannot be retro pay. And so, we would like to resolve the contracts and ensure that employees get every penny of their change in compensation. And so, we are asking, and also due to the requirements of state law, to have two meetings together to approve your budget, so we had the first two meetings in June, you have four weeks off, which is truly a blessing that you all deserve. Having said that, it causes some angst like walk-on items today. And additionally, if we have collective bargaining agreements, we'd like to see approved before the end of the year. We would ask that you let us take those up or you take those up on June 28th at your, normally, your city attorney interview session will start a little bit early and get that done. You've already established the meeting. This would add another agenda item.
Great. Any questions about that? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Alright, that takes us to item number two. And this is a resolution approving a 90-day extension to the city's valet parking license ordinance for fixed locations and special event uses.
So moved?
Support? Alright, city clerk, you wanna speak to this at all? It's my understanding it's just an extension to give us some more time to work on this ordinance.
That's, I couldn't add a word more. That's exactly what it is. It's just giving us more time to work through some work that is currently underway as it relates to our city valet parking licenses. And because we do not want to harm our current valet parking license holders, we believe that an extension is important.
Great. And thank you. I wanna say thank you for your work on this. We've all said multiple times that we wanna be as business-friendly as we possibly can. And we want businesses to grow and thrive here. And this is an issue that was brought up by a number of businesses, especially as we get more and more restaurants opening downtown. So thank you for your work on this.
Absolutely.
Alright, any questions? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries.
What about item two?
Pardon?
Somehow, a new copy of Committee of the Hole came out this morning with a walk-on inserted as number two.
Oh, well, I don't have this new copy.
Well, I didn't either, mayor.
So, oh, you know what? I do have this. I just had it at the end of my agenda. But we can go ahead and do this right now. Let me just pull it up. So can I get a motion to suspend the rules for an add-on?
So moved?
Support?
All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so we have suspended the rules to consider a resolution approving the request from New Holland Brewing for a new microbrewer, small wine maker and small distiller license to be located at 427 Bridge Street.
So moved?
Support?
Okay. Hello?
Hello, good morning.
Sorry, I'm trying to still find my notes on this. But why don't you go ahead and tell us some more about it?
New Holland Brewing Company applied on May 19th for a new microbrewer, small wine maker and small distiller license that is to be located at 427 Bridge Street Northwest. The proposed opening date is gonna be September 1st. They're also applying through the state for an outdoor service permit, entertainment permit, and Sunday sales permits. The application has been reviewed and is being recommended for approval.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Alright, I will call the question then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. And we are all really excited to have New Holland here in the city. So welcome. Alright, that will next take us to, I think it's technically then, item number four. And this is a resolution designating 1101 Monroe Avenue Northwest as an art prize venue and authorizing a hosting agreement.
So moved?
Support?
Alright, Mr. Almonte, you wanna tell us about this?
Believe it or not, we're talking about art prize, Commissioner, Mayor.
Exciting.
It is, it is. This is a new site that we would like you to consider approving this morning to serve as a venue during art prize. And we are entering into a hosting agreement with Richard App. The information that I included in the packet include the type of art that's gonna be exhibited during art prize. And the public can benefit by attending this new venue, which will begin September 21st through October 9th. And the hours operation are from noon to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday and Sunday from noon to 6:00 PM.
Thank you. I see Mr. App in the audience. Is there anything you wanna add?
I'm not sure yet.
Alright, good answer.
Just come and see her, it's gonna be fun, okay?
Alright, good answer. Commissioners, do you have any questions? No? Okay. I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Thank you. Thank you both. Alright, that will take us to item number four. This is a resolution authorizing alcohol at special, specific special events that are located on public property in June, July, and August.
So moved?
Support? Alright, so Yvette, you wanna tell us about this? We have a list of the events and times. I think that was actually a request by one of the commissioners around this table. So thank you for that. You wanna tell us about these?
Absolutely. Good morning. We have a number of events that are coming up that are located on city property. And they have all gone through the permit process or are going through the permit process. Every event will have insurance as required by risk management that is approved by risk management. We are working diligently to make sure that these events are not only fun for the community but safe and exciting for the city.
And Yvette, for the liability insurance, we're getting copies of that and that'll be held with the permit?
Absolutely. It's held within the Office of Special Events.
That's a responsibility of the Risk Management Office, Mayor.
Okay, great. Alright, questions?
Just a comment of thanks. I just wanna point out that I saw Yvette on Sunday going out of her way to make sure that the Loving Day event was successful and there weren't any problems. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Good customer service.
Good thanks.
Alright, any other questions or comments? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Thank you for your work on that. Alright, that will take us to item number, I guess it's six, item number six. And this is a resolution approving the fiscal year 2017 budget of the city of Grand Rapids for the Downtown Improvement District.
So moved?
Support?
Alright.
Good morning.
Hi, Gina.
I'm here this morning instead of Chris Larson, who's in Scotland, talking about our wonderful downtown. So, this is the Downtown Improvement District. This budget was approved by the Downtown Improvement District Board on June 6th, just a week ago. It's a five-year plan which you approved on December 15. This is year number two of the five-year plan. These are, you'll recall, funds paid by property owners. So during the course of the renewal, Chris and his team met with property owners downtown. And there was an appeal process. We did remove a couple of those properties from the district. And the budget before you is based on year two of that five-year plan. So the dollar amounts haven't changed. All Chris has done since that plan is he set aside a reserve, run to collectible accounts. As I say in my cover memo, there are certain property owners, Class II and Class III, who don't pay property taxes. And so the city treasurer is not allowed to attach it to their property tax bills because they don't have property tax bills. So we encourage and cajole and convince the Class II and III property owners to pay. The city of Grand Rapids is one of the property owners that pays and we don't have to convince them.
Great. Any questions?
Got a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
Just curious, Jenna, can you tell me if the line item for the ambassador program, has it always been that amount or has it increased over the years?
This is either the first or second year where the debt, I think it's the first year where the debt's been paying in part for this ambassador program. Of course, all the property owners downtown benefit from the ambassador program. It also includes the clean team. So the clean team is budgeted separately under the Maintenance and Beautification Line Item. The ambassador, $100,000 is just a share, I think about 25% of the overall cost of the ambassador program. And this part, this line item, is specifically where they help people open their cars, where they get them to their car, help people who are inebriated find shelter, that kind of thing.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jenna, for your work on the, all of the SIDS and BIDS and DID. Alright, that will take us to item number seven. And this is a resolution approving a development agreement and authorizing acquisition of Kent County 2016 tax foreclosure properties for conveyance to the Kent County Land Bank Authority.
So moved?
Support?
Alright, Cara?
Good morning. This resolution approves a development agreement and authorizes the acquisition of up to 43 Kent County tax-foreclosed properties, as well as any Grand Rapids properties that have received extensions from Kent County's Treasurer's Office that may end up being foreclosed on or before June 30th of this year. This resolution declares the acquisition of the properties to be for public purposes and authorizes their conveyance to the Kent County Land Bank Authority. The obligations of the Kent County Land Bank Authority are defined in the attached agreement, which requires the Kent County Land Bank Authority to complete redevelopment, repurpose, and/or resale on the above referenced properties in fulfillment of the public purposes within 18 months of the city's conveyance to them. The Kent County Land Bank Authority will be taking the approval of this agreement up at their June 23rd meeting. The acquisition costs, recording fees, are currently estimated to be approximately $566,000 plus recording fees and amounts due for other property-related services as determined by the city treasurer. And those are to be deposited no later than July 15th. The Kent County Land Bank Authority presented its progress to you on their 2015 tax foreclosures on June 7th. And the Economic Development Project Team has also reviewed this process at their meeting on the same day.
Great. So commissioners, we had an update recently from the Kent County Land Bank. I think we're all really familiar with the work that they do. I do wanna say that Commissioner Allen will be recusing himself from this discussion and abstaining from this vote. But I wanted to open it up to you if you have any questions for Cara?
Okay.
Commissioner?
Thank you. Cara, these are just homes then, correct? This group? We haven't gotten to...
It would be any foreclosed properties.
Okay, so it could include vacant land?
It could.
Okay.
Or commercial or industrial, not necessarily just residential.
Okay, well, I didn't wanna jump the gun here, but I certainly am excited about what the land bank has done and will do in the future and some additional opportunities that Commissioner Jones and I are exploring with our area providers of workforce training in the construction industry, which would be KISD, GRCC, and GRPS, and some opportunities that we might have to work with the land bank in the future or directly with the city in terms of lowering costs of land in order to provide more affordability. So it's just something that we're looking at and really wanted to share my appreciation for the work that the land bank has done.
And Commissioner, thank you for bringing that up. I really appreciate you and Commissioner Jones taking the lead on this and plan to add this to our agenda in July during our affordable housing work session. So that will give you an opportunity to brief and update the entire commission on the work that you've been doing.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Oh, and any abstentions?
I abstain.
Thank you. One abstention, it carries. Alright, next, item number eight is a resolution approving a brownfield plan amendment under Act 381 of 1996 for the Grand Rapids Market Avenue LLC redevelopment project located at 234 Market Avenue Southwest and 257 Finney Avenue Southwest.
So moved?
Support?
Alright, Cara, you wanna tell us about this? We had a public hearing related to this project. And we're able to get a full briefing on what they're proposing there. It's currently a vacant site?
It is not, it's vacant, but there will be demolition for construction of 230 apartment units, 28,000 square feet of ground floor commercial space and four live-work townhomes along with associated onsite parking. The project is estimated at about $50 million with 50 new full-time jobs and 20 new part-time jobs that could be created as a result of this investment. The work plan that, the work plan indicates that reimbursement of up to $11.9 million of eligible activities could be reimbursed over a 25-year period with the approval of this plan amendment. The Economic Development Project Team did look at this project on June 7th.
Questions? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Not a question, but a comment. I think it's important, it's important when we approve these, when I hear the public comment from, when we have the hearings on these, people are always talking about how much we're giving. And it's important for the public to know that the Economic Development Department each time gives us a worksheet that talks about what our net positive is. So on this particular project, even though we're designating it as a brownfield contributing to the development through additional city income taxes and additional city funding, our net per year annual is projected to be $100,000 per year on a positive cash flow basis for the city. So this is a positive for the developer, but it's also a positive for the city financially as well. And I think it's very important to mention that each and every time.
Yeah, I think, and I think what's also important is to help differentiate what the different credits are for with it being a brownfield. That's because of environmental issues on this site and that will assist with environmental cleanup. So I think that's important to explain as well. Alright, good comment. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Alright, that will take us to item number nine. This is a resolution approving an application for an industrial facilities exemption certificate for Eagle Film Extruders LLC at 1100 Heinz Avenue Southwest.
So moved?
Support?
A public hearing was also held on this tax abatement request for a 12-year industrial facility tax exemption. This is a 50% tax abatement for an investment of real property improvements of approximately 2.05 million with an additional 15 million planned in machinery and equipment. 55 individuals currently work at their Heinz Avenue plant and 50 employees are anticipated to be hired. The state of Michigan, through the Michigan Strategic Fund, is also considering a $300,000 performance-based grant that would also require a local match, which this tax abatement serves as. The Economic Development Project Team reviewed this project on June 7th.
Thank you. And I will add, in follow-up to what Commissioner Allen said, on this resolution, there's a breakdown of the jobs added. This will be a significant increase in jobs, but then also the amount of new taxes generated in proportion to how much is being abated. Alright, any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner.
We heard from the owner of this company that the jobs that are being created, the average salary is $36,000 a year plus they give good health benefits, which is also important and things that we vet when we work with these type of business owners for these type of, this type of support.
Yeah, thank you. Other questions or comments? Alright, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Alright, that will take us to Committee of the Hole, item number 10. This is a resolution establishing an industrial development district for Hudsonville Products LLC at 1739 Elizabeth Avenue Northwest. Can I get a motion?
So moved?
Thank you. Alright, Cara, we heard from this company, the owners as well, we're really excited that they're looking at moving into Grand Rapids.
Yes, this is a relocation from Holland where they will invest $300,000 in a property at 1739 Elizabeth Northwest. This will include site improvements, loading docks, energy-efficient upgrades to the building, office and showroom renovations. They have four employees in Holland and will be adding at least two new additional positions here in Grand Rapids. Average wages are $16 an hour. And this also summarizes your next resolution considering the approval of the application for this tax abatement as well.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, it carries. That will take us to item number 11, which is a resolution approving an application for the industrial facilities exemption certificate for the same project, Hudsonville Products LLC at 1739 Elizabeth Avenue Northwest.
So moved?
Support?
Okay. Anything to add?
So this is just the certificate associated with the previous project that I just described.
Okay, questions? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Alright, next, we have a resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement with the Association of Public Administrators of Grand Rapids. Can I get a motion?
So moved?
Support?
Alright.
Morning.
Good morning.
So this would approve a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the APA. And the significant terms are included here. Wages, which are the same as all of the other non-police groups. Healthcare items that are the same as the other agreements as well. And we're offering the same parking incentive. We have agreed to modify active assignment language that will include active assignment pay from the first date of assignment, if it's 10 days or longer. And the agreement also includes adding children and spouse to regular use of sick leave. And then the city also agreed to pay for certain training that's required as a result of the job descriptions.
Alright, questions? Okay. Anything else to add?
Sure, the bargaining team would recommend approval of that.
Thank you. And thanks to everyone who worked on these. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Alright, that will take us to item number 13. This is a resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters.
So moved?
Support? Okay.
Okay, again, this would approve a three-year bargaining agreement with the fire department. And the significant terms are included here as well. The wages, again, are the same as other non-police units. Healthcare changes are the same as the other agreements with the exception Healthcare changes are the same as the other agreements, with the exception that the city will add a 1/10 of a percent to the Medicare Trust Fund. So it goes from .7% to .8% for the city's contribution. The agreement modifies the non-duty disability pension, creates a scale for new hires. That gives them 50% of that benefit, and then from the fifth year to the 10th year, they acquire 10% more until they get to 100%. The city will be creating a mutually-agreed drop program, retirement program, and we're increasing the education incentive.
Before you move beyond that, to be crystal clear, it would be a drop program that would have zero cost to the city. It has to be mutually agreeable and be cost-neutral to the city.
Yep.
There's an increase as well to the education incentive from $500 to $750, and the city agreed to purchase some Class A uniforms. Again, the city's bargaining team would recommend approval.
Okay, all right. And then I see Jody Bay is in the audience, so thank you for your leadership, Joe, and your work. I open it up for questions, comments, Commissioners?
Just, I think it would be helpful if you explained the drop program, because I know that we are looking at a lot of retirements, and just for the public to understand that a little better, Ken, could you talk about the drop program?
Yeah, and it's probably best that this person sitting right next to me helped me with this, so, actually, so Scott and I and the Unions have all been working on it, mostly Scott, so.
Commissioner, you, I think you're hitting on to why this is a good thing mutually in that with our need for retirements accelerating and coming up, including in the Fire Department, that we have an opportunity to retain some talent longer so that the transition will be smoother for us.
Right.
So, the way a drop program works is an employee nearing the end of their career may elect to go into the program, and by doing so, they would fix their final pension benefits. They would make irrevocable elections that would establish what their pension benefit would be. During their participation in the program, these, the pension benefits would be paid into a savings account held by the pension office at a reduced rate, at about 75% of what their actual pension benefit would be. They would also be able to continue their employment as an active so long as they continue to, they complete their drop program performance period at the end of their drop performance. So during this period of being in the drop, they are kind of like a hybrid. They have some characteristics of being a retiree, they also have characteristics of being an active employee. And then after they complete their drop program performance, the amounts that have been accumulated in these accounts from their pension benefits would be rolled into a 457-type plan account. So, it has benefits to the city because we defer the requirements to hire a replacement employee. It also fixes and locks in their final average salaries, and it also has benefits to the employee where they can accumulate some lump sum amounts for lifestyle issues that they may want to attend to.
Scott, there's limitations. They have to commit to one year, two years, three years, right?
Correct. There, the program that we've defined with police was that they could elect up to five years and could do an amount, lessen that with one potential extension. We would be looking to do similar things with fire, although we may choose to try to limit the period to something less than five years, because firefighters have a tendency to retire at an age greater than what police does. So, we may, that, we've had very, we'd need to have some ongoing discussions with fire, but I would expect it to look very much like the police drop would put some, some tweaking around the edges for the unique characteristics of a firefighter career.
Right. Well, thank you for that, Scott, because we've all been real concerned about our succession planning, and this is a great program, I think, to keep people on with experience as we're trying to find new recruits in public safety. So I'd like to thank the Police Department and the Fire Department for cooperating with us on that.
That's great. Great. All right, any other questions? Comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next, that will take us to item number 14, and this is an ordinance amendment approving salary changes for certain appointed officials.
I'll move it. Support?
Okay, Mary Beth, you want to tell us about this?
Get away, Scott. Yes, Scott can definitely handle this. Mayor and Commissioners, good morning. This is just really a housekeeping issue through the process of looking at the classification study. As my department was going through various classifications, I observed and had further research done, and I found out that the, actually, what happened when we had two vacant positions, non-permanent staff positions for the City Treasurer and the City Clerk position, that during January 1, 2014, the City Commission had actually approved an ordinance that incorporated two modification steps for the City Manager and the City Attorney. So, and I believe perhaps that wasn't done for the City Clerk and the City Treasurer position, because there was no permanent person in those positions. And from a classification standpoint, HR, we did not bring forward that salary ordinance back in 2014. But when you do something like that, you should also do parallel construction. And so this is a housecleaning to modify and incorporate those two additional steps or modification to the end steps for the City Attorney, or the City Clerk and the City Treasurer position. This, since this occurred back in 2014, that's when this modification should have been made to these two classifications. However, I have met with both the appointed officials, and I indicated, I think, because if they had been done at the time, they would be in different places now in their step progression. But I think that it is appropriate to, in addition to making this modification to the end steps, as was done with the other two, that we at least go back to this year, January 2016, my goodness, to recompense them, had these steps been in place, at least back to that. Not all the way back to 2014, but to January 2016. And I think that's parity, and I think that's, this is something that should be done.
Okay. All right, so first off, thank you for catching this and for rectifying this oversight. Commissioners, any questions?
I was just going to say the exact same thing. Thanks, Mary Beth, for your work on this and bringing parity. I think that's vitally important for all of our appointed officials.
Yeah. Anyone else? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next, that will take us to item number 15, and this is a resolution establishing a 2016 property tax millage rate.
So moved? Support?
All right, Mr. Bureau?
Thank you. On April 26, the City Manager released the recommended preliminary fiscal plan. And for the weeks thereafter, the City Commission spent several hours listening to presentations, asking questions, and asking for follow-up information related to the recommended budget. On May 24, the City Commission adopted a resolution scheduling a public hearing regarding the public millage, or the budget and the proposed millage rates. That public hearing was held on June 7. Today, what we have in front of you is a resolution that would authorize the property tax millage at 9.1166 mils, which is .0349 mils less than we levied last year due to the provisions of Headley and Proposal A. The property taxes are necessary to fund or defray in part the expenditures contained in the 2017 recommended budget, which is the next item on your agenda. And with that, I recommend approval.
Okay. All right, questions, Commissioners? Oh, Greg, you want to make a comment?
Just would like to point out that by action on this agenda item, you will be lowering the tax rate for our citizens. As noted in the email, some of their taxes will actually rise, but that's only because we have strong property value growth here in this community. So, as far as your role, you are actually lowering taxes for residents.
See if that makes headline.
A rare opportunity.
I think you are good.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, that will take us to item number 16. This is an ordinance establishing the annual budget of the City of Grand Rapids for the fiscal year 2017.
So moved? Support?
Okay. All right, so City Manager, you want to start us off on this?
I would enjoy doing that, thank you. Over, since April 26, when you first received the preliminary fiscal plan, you have had 14 hours over four-long budget review sessions. And in that period, it culminated somewhat last week with a suggestion for either questions concerning the appropriation recommendations or with comments. And for example, and I've detailed responses to those to the best of my ability, I found 10 different topics that brought up. I have a few more that I'd like to comment on as well. But for example, I think I heard nearly universally from the City Commission last Tuesday evening, a desire to eliminate the housing coordinator position. So, that is what I'm recommending, and in fact, in the budget ordinance that you would approve, that position would no longer be there. I would point out, I also heard the City Commission say that you may be interested in a different type of relationship to provide this work, such as a contractual one or a partnership. And so the money is still there, it is reserved in general administration, and it is characterized as for housing initiatives, for example. But I have tried to respond to each of your questions. If you'd like, Mayor, I can go through all 10. I don't know that it's necessary. But there were a few items that were left unresolved in my ability to provide you complete answers for this morning, and it really has to do with the last two items, and these were brought up last Tuesday evening as well. I am updating the list of consultant services that were provided previously, and as soon as that's created, I will provide that to you, Commissioners, as well as the notion of leaf collection. Just so you know, we do have a team that has been working on this, and they have an A3 that they're working on. And again, we would prevent, present this to you in the future for your consideration. Finally, and it was already addressed in fiscal, but I think it's important that you understand, and Committee of the Whole here as well, there was a walk-on budget ordinance amendment as well that did a couple things that, for this fiscal plan, that you will be considering, and that is to take the contingent fund and fund demolition of the three city pools that we failed to demolish earlier.